We just have one board member short and then she's on her way. Okay, it's seven o'clock Tuesday, January 27th. We're in the C R room in the community center. It's the time, date, and place for the Carson City School Board meeting. And with that, I will, if you will stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a...
Oh, no, I'm not going to move that. I am going to move that we have a guest for under Agenda Item 9 who has a plane to catch. So I'm going to move that we move Agenda Item 9 to immediately following Agenda Item 6. So 6.5, I guess is what we'd make it.
Second.
Okay, Ryan, second. Any discussion, comments from the public? Your name, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, so moved. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We have some special guests with us this evening. I'd like to introduce Evelyn Allred, who is the principal at Empire Elementary School. And Ms. Allred will follow up on a program that was introduced back in the fall and talk a little bit about the success that they have been able to enjoy at Empire. So Ms. Allred, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, President Swarzak, and members of the board. We were very fortunate this year to start an academic and behavior program centered around soccer at Empire. And this was through the generous donations of Let Them Be Kids from Mr. Ian Hill. But I would like to call up the teacher who was instrumental in setting up the program and developing the program. And then I have three students here to speak with you as well about what the program meant to them. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Nathan Brigham, Dani Casares, Melanie Ariano, and Vanessa Gonzalez. And they will be coming up to speak to you.
And if you'll all just state your name for the record.
Nathan Brigham. I'm the SFA facilitator at Empire. And when Ian came to Empire and wanted to get something set up to increase academics and kind of thinking outside the box, what we ended up coming up with was an intramural soccer program. One of the things that we talked about was when we set up interventions, we want to look for something that really grabs the kids. And in our community in Carson City, soccer is very big. Empire especially, soccer is very important. So we kind of went with that. And there were really three main aspects we wanted the program to have. Number one, it was barrier free, which meant the kids paid absolutely nothing for it. They didn't have to pay a signup fee. They didn't have to pay a uniform fee. We did it at school during recess, so parents didn't have to worry about transportation getting them anywhere. Any kid that wanted to play, regardless of ability, was able to play. So that was our first thing. The second thing was we wanted it to be focused on increasing academics and behavior. So every kid that wanted to play had to set an individual academic and behavior goal with their teacher. The goals varied depending on the student. Some of them were increasing homework. Some of it was increasing knowing math facts. Some of it was decreasing trips to the bathroom during the day. Because the more frequently they're in the bathroom, the less they're learning. It all depended on the student. Once we started playing, the students had to have met their goal each week to participate in their game during that week. So that was where that piece of tying in their academics and their behavior came in. The last thing was, we really wanted to put some leadership and responsibility into the kids. So the students essentially reffed their games. Myself and the P E teacher, we were out there kind of monitoring to make sure nothing big happened. But the kids ran their games. They kept score. They set the fields up. They tore the fields down. They were really in charge of it. It ran for two months. It cost $10 to $1,200. Some of it was initial startup fee because we had to purchase goals, balls. Mr. Hill donated all of that. The kids got uniforms that they got to keep at the end of the season. Ninety-six percent of the students in fifth grade participated in the program. It was completely voluntary. At the end of the season, which ran for two months, ninety-five percent of the weekly goals were met for all the students that participated in the program. So we ended up having, with all the kids that played, there were 300 and some weekly goal sheets that got turned in. Ninety-five percent of those kids met their goal every week. One of the measures that this program really worked is we've been off of the program for about a month and a half now. It's cold outside. Students have started to slip back a little bit. Still not as low as where they started when they set their goals, but they have started to slip back a little bit because there's not that reinforcement for them. And part of the student leadership is we wanted the kids to come to speak what the program meant to them. So we brought Vanessa, Dani, and Melanie. So I'm just going to have them each come up in turn and speak a little bit about how the program worked for them.
Dani, do you want to go first?
The program was like... Oh, Daniel Casares. The program like helped us achieve our goals and get better grades. And I think I liked this, I liked this program because it helped me write better sentences because that was my goal. And I think other schools should do this because it'll help their grades. And if you like soccer and you don't have like transportation, you can just drop your kid off at school and they can play at recess with their friends.
My name is Vanessa Gonzalez. And I think this would be a great program for other schools because it helps students work together and it helps them get better grades if they're failing on something. It helped me better with my math and writing because that was my goal. And it also helps you with...
My name is Melanie Ariano. This helped me a lot because I used to not turn in my homework often. And after this program, I turned in my homework. And this would help other schools because it would let them get better grades in their report cards.
Good job.
I would like to say as the principal too, one of the things I noticed the program did for our students was give them a sense of pride and accomplishment. And you could see on the days when they went out to play, they had their uniform on, they were feeling very self-confident and had a lot of pride in what they were doing. There was never squabbling. They didn't squabble on the field. They played, they had a good time, great sportsmanship. They learned the sportsmanship skills with each other and they taught each other sportsmanship skills. That's not what they would say to each other. I heard students saying, "That's not what we're here for. We're here to have fun and play the game, so let's just keep moving on." And those were the things that I saw that really impacted me as the principal, seeing these students take pride and so have the self-confidence to complete these games and the program itself. I have two teachers here tonight as well that were part of the fifth grade. And that's Mrs. Snelling and Ms. Meisler. And they were, they were also instrumental. The teachers didn't get a lot of credit, but they were the ones checking and making sure the students were meeting their goals. And they were the ones who had to make that decision, "Uh-oh, they're not going to make their goals this week." And, and they really spent a lot of time encouraging those kids. Meet your goal. Set a goal you can reach and then set a new goal. So with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Hill, who was instrumental in getting it started and supporting us. And he's going to give you a little bit more information about where he would like to go from here.
Thank you very much. President Swarzak, how are you, sir? Trustees, good to see you. I, Gina and I did fund the program. It cost us, I think, exact dollars, $1,083, uniforms, goals, and balls. Ninety-six percent of the fifth grade reached their academic and behavioral goals. That's got to be the cheapest intervention that we've ever executed in the district. I mean, seriously. Now, why? Well, first of all, we picked Empire because I believed in what I heard when I met with principal and with Nathan. Because I knew that they would do the backend work. They would quantify and they would be able to track whether the thing was successful or not. Because you have to have the data. Then I met with the kids. Guys, remember when I came and met with you? And I challenged them. And I said, "I'm here today and we're going to start this program, but the only reason I'm at Empire is because I believe that you young people will prove the value of intramural sports in public education." And I said, "It won't work, just soccer. You got to get your grades up and you got to get your behavior straight." And I say that. And ninety-six percent of them did it. And I told them that they would be founders of a program that would go throughout the district. So that's what we see, Gina and I see, is that this is the kind of program we would like to see in every elementary school. Now, as most of you know, I also have the honor of now being the chairperson for the Carson School District Foundation. And this is the kind of thing the foundation can fund. My commitment is that we're going to get this funded again at Empire in the spring. And then my commitment is that any elementary school in the spring that wants to participate, we'll make sure it's funded. It has to be linked to academic and behavioral goals, of course. And we have to make sure that the students understand their roles and responsibilities. But at the end of the day, the three of you and your fellow students proved it. You took my challenge and I'll follow through on my commitment to you. We'll get it in every other school. You did something that's never been done before. And for the rest of your lives, you'll be founders of a program that will now touch hundreds and eventually thousands of kids. And you should be proud of that. That means you can do anything with your life, okay? So that's all I had to say. We're going to, we're willing to step up and fund it through the Carson City School District Foundation. We want to show that this is the way the foundation, this is one of the ways the foundation can make an impact. And we're doing it for the, because these kids stepped up and proved it. And I also just, final comment. Incredible teacher, incredible professional, incredibly committed is what you have in Nathan. He brings, yeah, you can give him a round of applause. And he did, he did the work to be able to show quantifiably and empirically, not just anecdotally, empirically, the value of these kind of interventions. Low-cost, high-impact intervention. So again, thank you, principal, for allowing it to happen. Thank you, teachers, for your support. Thank you, of course, Nathan. And then students, kudos. And a big round of applause for the kids for pulling it off.
Well, Ian, thank you. Now, do, did I understand you? This is going to start again in the spring.
Yeah, I think you already have a couple of schools that are interested. And so this time, instead of donating directly to the school, we'll work with the Carson City School Foundation to make sure that any school that wants to participate will have that opportunity.
Well, thank you for taking the initiative and making it happen. This is really, it's something special. And Nathan, great job. And to the kids, you know, way to go. Keep it going.
Mr. President, members of the board, carrying on with my report. I'd like to make you aware of the fact that February has been identified as Career and Technical Education Month. And I have a little bit of information here on this. In Nevada, there are over 50,000 students in grades nine through 12 enrolled in more than 70 programs of career and technical education. And as such, our governor, Governor Sandoval, has provided a proclamation. I'd like to read that to you and to our audience this evening. In, in getting ready for, using February essentially as Career and Technical Education Month, "Whereas profound economic and technological advances necessitate a capable educated workforce with career-ready skills, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education connects Americans with potential careers and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry, contributes to American leadership in the international marketplace, and fills the growing skills gap. And whereas career and technical education gives high school students experience and practical, meaningful applications of academic employability and technical skills, thus improving the quality of their education and increasing student engagement. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills which provide them with career choices and potential satisfaction. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators in business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest demand in the next decade. Now therefore, I, Brian Sandoval, Governor of the State of Nevada, do hereby proclaim February 2015 as Career and Technical Education Month." So a lot of the work that's being done in our school district, I think, points to this fact. And we're happy to be part of the students and the faculty and the programming that represents career and technical education in our district. And in addition to that, you should have at your seats a copy of N N D A's Viewpoint Magazine, which is dedicated to the development of workforce in our region. And I just want to draw your attention to page number six, where we have a article here written by Dr. Stephen Prudair that has to do with Race to the Top Programming and the work that's being done in our school district. And so we're very proud of the staff and the administrators and certainly our students who are involved in these programs. And appreciate Senators, or sorry, Governor Sandoval in, in taking an important step in recognizing the work that career and technical educators are doing in our state. I'd also like to announce that the Sustainability Action Team, this is a team, a group of individuals who are headed up by Mr. Mark Kornick. And they have a meeting that will be held tomorrow. That's January 28th at 3:30 at the district office. And this group is all about green efforts in our buildings, sustainable energy. And they do a great work in our school district. And we'd like to invite anybody who'd like to attend that meeting from the public to go to the district office tomorrow at 3:30 and participate. Monday, February the 2nd is Professional Development Day for staff. No school for students, so they can stay home and celebrate Groundhog Day. And finally, I would like to just let you know that coming in March, it's a little ways away yet, but this is an important event. From 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be the First Annual Early Childhood Expo. And that will be held at the Boys and Girls Club, 1870 Russell Way. And our community members can learn about community services and programs for young children. There will also be Carson City School District kindergarten registration information. And it should be a great event. And we invite all who would like to attend to, to do so. And, Mr. President, that's my report for this evening.
We'll go on to the board reports and we'll begin, well, Carson High is not here. Savannah, this is Savannah. And you'll give the report for Pioneer High. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. On behalf of all the students at Pioneer High School, we would like to welcome our newest board member, Mrs. Contine and Mr. Green. We would also like to congratulate our English teacher, Mr. Atreberia, and his wife to their new addition of their family of a baby girl named Lily. Pioneer had another successful blood drive to help save lives in our community as well. If you guys would like a doghouse, contact Dave Johnson to work out the arrangements to take one home for that special dog in your life. The P H S JAG program, also known as the Jobs for American Graduates, has started publishing a newsletter for Pioneer High School with information and resources. To encourage our students to come to school as well, the P H S counselor and the leadership team will host a pancake breakfast on Friday and Monday mornings from 7:00 to 7:30 a.m. There, there will be Letterman's Luncheon in the library on Thursday, January 29th. Parents are welcome to attend. And a reminder for all the seniors to submit their cap and gown orders for graduation. Thank you. This concludes the activities, events, and announcements for Pioneer High School.
Savannah, thank you. Good report. Stacy?
From Empire, February 5th is Bingo a Multicultural Night from 6:00 to 8:00. And February 10th is a Science Fair from 6:00 to 7:30. I would just personally like to thank our staff for going to the Common Core Forum. We appreciate your time and effort there. And that's it.
All right, I have, well, first, I've visited with Mrs. Sims at Boarderwick Elementary School. And that was a really good meeting, getting led around there. I went to Mark Twain and Boarderwick. And it was impressive walking around both schools. The engagement I saw at both schools was, was incredible. I felt bad going into classrooms and meeting people, but I don't, I don't think I even phased the kids, which was, was, it's, it's a neat thing to watch a teacher grab not only one child, but all of them. It was, it was, it was exciting to see. Anyway, the announcements at Boarderwick. February 6th at 7:30 in the morning, they're having what they call the All-Pro Dad's Breakfast. And that's sponsored by the P T A. And it's for dads, uncles, grandpas, men in the children's lives to come eat breakfast with the children. And then their spring enrichment classes will start on February 10th. And those are sponsored by the P T A. And they are extracurricular classes that are after school so that the students can learn more, say, in art or a variety of classes that they offer. So that's Boarderwick at Mark Twain. Same thing, I had a good meeting there. They have, they wanted me to mention on Friday, this Friday, the 30th, they're having an assembly and that's put on by their P T O. And then April 19th, they're going to be singing the National Anthem at the Aces baseball game. Yeah, that sounds neat. And then, so vouchers are for sale through the P T O for that. And then access testing is continuing for E L L students. And then on February 11th is Science Day. And that evening will be Mark Twain's Science Fair. So if you'd like to go look at the student science projects, you can show up anytime during the day and they'll be in the, on display in the cafeteria. That's my report.
Dion?
I don't have anything.
I didn't get a chance to talk to Jan Albertson, but I do recall that there was a child find. There is a child find date coming up for the Early Childhood Center. If you are concerned that your child who is three years of age or close to three years of age, but not yet kindergarten age, may be developmentally delayed, you can make an appointment with Student Support Services. I believe it's either February 5th or February 6th is their next child find date. So you can give them a call and check on that and they do an evaluation. For Fritsch, the next P T A meeting is February 9th at 6:00 p.m. And I have a report on the P T A-sponsored Read-a-thon that they do over winter break. 121 students participated. They read 58,773 pages. And 17 students read over 1,000 pages. The top reader had over 5,000 pages because Jordan S., I didn't get her last name or his last name, read the entire Harry Potter series and a few extra books over the break. So congratulations to our young readers. And then Joe's not here, so I just was going to, well, I was part of the C M S, First Lego League, Lego robotic teams. And so I was going to report on that. The regional F L L competition with 25 teams was held last Saturday up at U N R. And three teams from C M S were there. One team from Fritsch qualified for it and the two teams from Eagle Valley. And I believe they're coming to report at our next board meeting to tell us all of the things, there were many awards had. And I just would say that, just as a point of interest, our governor was there. His daughter was on one of the teams. And he graciously posed for pictures with every team that came by. So he was very kind to all the students that were there. So it was a good experience for them.
Well, I just have a couple of things. And one is, I want to follow up on Mr. Stokes and our C T E program. And I want to acknowledge Michelle Lewis. She has done just an outstanding job in restructuring this and getting it far, far ahead of where it, where it's ever been. So anyway, Michelle, thank you so much. Secondly, secondly, I'd like to recognize and acknowledge our Carson High Performing Arts. Mr. Stokes and I had the privilege of being at the performance on Friday night of All My Sons. And I'll tell you what. Dana Rose Fleming and Henry Wilson did a, just a tremendous job in directing this, this performance. And to the students and to the crew, I mean, you can't say enough good things about what they did. They captured every part of me in this, in their performance. And I just want to go out and acknowledge what a fine performing arts that we have here at the Carson High School. Richard, you want to, any?
Ditto, Mr. President.
All right. We now have association reports.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, staff, and certified members out there and teachers everywhere. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ryan Green and Ms. Dion Contine also to the board. Apologize not making it to your first board meeting. I know how exciting that one really is. So I did skip it. But I did skip it in favor of the Common Core Forum, which was very enlightening to sit through and see where we stand as a state right now. And that's just kind of the association's message right now. And I forgot the one thing I was supposed to always do. Brian Wallace, O C E A, yesterday. And that's where we're at right now. Going into this legislative session is going to be a very interesting time for all of us. Knowing that unfortunately, that this school board now has a target painted on its back depending upon the will of the legislative members and what B D Rs, those bill draft requests that come down and make their way through committees and hopefully not to the floor of either House. of either House. As we move forward with this, I'm going to leave you tonight with probably a question that's not really fair to leave this board with, knowing the working relationship we truly have had within this city, not only between every association that's out there or unions, if that's what the god-awful term we want to use any longer is, and that's fine, we'll own it. I'm a proud union member, and I'm going to keep saying it right now as we move forward through this session. Because we have shown a pattern of success in this district, both fiscally and for every single student. And when we have decided to make those fiscal decisions, even as an association, we have kept students and teachers and every staff member at the forefront. We had an ending fund balance because of that. We weathered the majority of this recession because of it. We have the grant because of it. We have one-to-one because of it, and we have not had under layoffs because of it. It is highly unfortunate now that teachers have become the target, not only within this state, but also within this nation. So I'm going to leave you with a very unfortunate question, but one that I think we all need to start to consider as we move into this session and seeing what's truly facing us. When and why have teachers become the enemy?
It's always good to hear from you, and I hope that we just keep continuing working together for the kids, just like you said, for the kids. Casey?
I'm Casey Gillis. I'm principal at Fremont, but I'm here tonight because I'm also president of the Administrators' Association. I too would have liked to have been at your first meeting, but unlike Brian, I had a really good excuse. I was homesick. Or I would have been here. But on behalf of our association, we're a small association. It's all the school administrators here in the district. We just wanted to say Happy New Year and welcome our new members, Mr. Green and Mrs. Contine, to the board. And just let you know that we are so proud of our district, from the leadership at the district office to the hard work of all the professionals in every school. And so we just want to invite you in to visit us. And one of the things I would like to invite you, since Mr. Reynolds wasn't here tonight to give Fremont's report, on February 17th, we're having a technology night for third through fifth grade students and their parents. Not only will parents get a chance to work with their students with the laptops and the different pillars of the technology, but we're going to preview the S-Back testing and let parents see how to get on, what their children have to do. And so come on down, try your hand at S-Back and see what our students will be facing when they take the test. You're more than welcome. Also, we have a little-
Casey, what time is it?
It's going to start at 6:00, thank you. If you want dinner, PTA is providing dinner from 5:30 to 6:00, but the actual time to work with the technology is 6:00 to 7:00.
And the scores will be confidential?
Absolutely. And we have, we've taken it ahead of time so we know what the right answers are when the kids question, because we've been working daily with kids practicing. So the first thing we had to do is figure out that we knew it too. So come on down for a little bit if you want and see what it's like. Also, we have a tradition here in the district. In February is Banderama on the 26th, and we know that it's a real short turnaround time between getting off work and getting there for the performance. So the Administrators' Association provides dinner for any board members, district office members, and administrators who'd like to come down between 5:00 and 6:00. It's very casual. This year Penny is letting us have her dining room, but she'll be at competition with her students. So we'll be bringing dinner in, so it won't be near the quality of Penny's dinner. But we still wanted to continue, and she's letting us use her kitchen, or not her kitchen, but the dining room. So I have invitations. I'm not, I won't walk around. I'll give them to Renee, and you can pick one up, and then you can let us know if you can come. So again, we just wanted to say we're looking forward to a great year. Please come and visit us in all our schools. We'd love to have you, and have a great year. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. One more thing, since Mr. Reynolds wasn't here, I would be remiss in not giving Fremont's report, because we had a wonderful thing happen today. We were lucky enough to be chosen once again as one of the schools in northern Nevada for the Barnes &amp; Noble Book Drive over the holidays. And this really is backed by City National Bank, who has always been one of our partners. Today, they came to our school and provided us with over 1,300 brand-new books for our students, and then handed us a check for over $4,000 from City National Bank to use to purchase more books for the school and for our families. And we use them, we use the books for our SFA program, our library, science education, but we also make sure that every student gets a book. In every event we have at our school, we have free books for students because we don't want them sitting on a shelf, we want them in their hands at home. So we had just about finished off the last batch we were given, and we got this new batch today. So I really want to thank Barnes &amp; Noble and City National Bank and for their generosity. So thank you.
Any comments from the board? Good job, Casey. The other association reports?
Okay, item number six, we've got a public comment.
Thank you. Good job. Public comment, the comments may be, I'm going to read just this so we have the understanding going forward. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of the board. Please note the public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action. So as we go through the agenda, if you've got something, we'll stop, and you'll have time for comment there. But this particular public comment phase is, we're encouraging members of the public to comment on just any item that is not on the agenda. And all that we ask is that you, you know, kind of limit your comments to around three minutes, but if you've got a passion, if you've got something, you want more, you know, we'll extend that, we'll grant that. But just, all we want is just people to be respectful and think of the kids when you give your comments. Okay? With that, any public comments? I hope I didn't scare people off. Okay, thank you.
All right, now we can go to, it was now the old, the agenda item number nine, the-
It's the informational update on a school-based health center in the Carson City School District. And this is Richard Stokes and Valerie Dockery.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you know, for about the past year, we have been talking about and reviewing the possibility of creating a student, a school-based health center here in Carson City. And we have, it's been a little while since we've talked about this topic, and we did want to bring this in front of the board this evening. So taking the reins for this presentation tonight, we have Mrs. Valerie Dockery, who is our Grants and Special Projects Director. And we also have with us some officials from Nevada Health Centers who will add information to this presentation and also be able to answer some questions. So I'll turn the time over to Mrs. Dockery.
Good evening, President Swirzick, members of the board, and senior administration. We are, I'm going to take you through a short PowerPoint this evening, just to kind of bring you up to speed on where we've been with this school-based health center. And then I will introduce our partners that are with us tonight. And if you have some additional questions after you've seen the information, they can also answer your questions at that time. So we're going to get started. First of all, just a little reminder, back to our strategic plan and power Carson City 2017, we have a goal, under Goal Three, healthy generations of Carson students, that we want to promote optimal wellness for all students. And under that goal, Objective 3.3 is to provide access to health care for students by establishing a school-based health center in Carson City. So it is really a tangible goal within our plan. And just some statistics that we put together in the spring of last year that are still relevant coming into this year. Last year, our enrollment was 7,531 students on count day last fall, previous fall. We had, we provided in the 1314 school year, 2,245 vaccinations for children. We had 1,177 students with private insurance. We had 82 uninsured students. I think that number is wrong. I think it's higher than that. And we had 556 students that with, on Medicaid, and 264 in Nevada checkup, and 520 that were uninsured. And despite the fact that we have, you know, mandatory health care, we still have many children that are still in that category. And this is really important. Our average, our nurses average at least three referrals to doctors every day in their clinics in their schools, in each school. And that was an average, many of them much higher than three. So thinking about that, Mr. Stokes and I did travel to Las Vegas to see a school-based health center that was put together and run by Nevada Health Centers, and we learned a lot about the basic requirements of a clinic. We learned that there's got to be a front office with a waiting area, that we have to have a clerk station, like you see here, that we have to have information on clinic programs for families and parents and families, and information on what's available in our community. And we have to provide at least English, Spanish in our communications. Have to have a waiting room area. We also have to have two to three exam rooms, depending on the size of our health center. Again, we need a clerk. We need a medical provider, whether that's a physician, a nurse practitioner, or a physician's assistant. And we need to have an office for that provider. And we need to have equipment, like you see here, for exam rooms. So these are all things that come into play if we're going to have, if we're going to reach the goal of having a health center. We have to have a small supply room. We have to have a lab area. We have to have refrigerators for labs and vaccines. We have to have two separate bathrooms, and eye wash station, and oxygen and nitrogen tanks. There's just, I know these seem like little things, but when you're putting all this together, these are mandatory things that have to be in place. I mean, just a discussion alone that we've had about the bathroom situation, for example, that was not just a really quick thing that we could do. And of course, we have to have daily cleaning, which is different than the cleaning that we provide in our school settings. Again, some more pictures of some of the facilities we saw when we were in Vegas. And on our end of it, what we can provide, what we bring to the table, is an off-campus central location that we're proposing for our school-based health center. And the reason we are doing it off-campus is for security. We are not going to have children and families entering a school in and out of a secure area. And when we were in Vegas, this is what we observed, that the clinic was on the site of a school, but separate. So we think that's important. So we are proposing for our center that we be in a portable building, and we use the existing portable that we have behind the Gleason School, the PDC building on Musser, that we, and that that center would share space with our McKinney-Vento, which is our program that serves homeless youth. And also important back there is that we have adequate parking, and the district's commitment is to provide utilities and maintenance for this project. Here's a picture of that building with our lovely new parking area. This is what the rooms currently look like now that would house, these are some of the rooms that would house this health center. So they clearly are not in the condition right now that we can open a health center Working with Mr. Kornick, who's here with us tonight, we have a rough drawing that's in your handout of what the space would look like. You can see we have the bathroom situation figured out, we have a lab area, we have receptionist waiting room, we have exam rooms, et cetera. We have all the things we talked about in this drawing, so we feel that we can make this building work for us. We would actually, and I really have to thank Mark Kornick for working on this and getting and helping us with this design, because we have to move the entrance for McKinney-Vento so there's two separate entrances to the building if we are, if we are going to be able to house the health center in this building. And we did our due diligence in looking at other possible locations, but this location is fairly central to three schools with about 2,200, 2,400 students, and walking distance to many of where our students live, particularly the ones that are living in motels and hotels in that area. And of course, we have to have a clinical partner, because we cannot, we are not in the business of providing health care. We don't, that's not what we do. And so we have been in conversations with Nevada Health Centers, and I will have them introduce themselves in a few minutes, and they have, they have committed staffing to this project. They've committed supplies, telephone, and equipment to this project so that we can get it off the ground. And so we're really pleased with the conversations we've had so far in trying to put together a plan to make this a reality. Our proposal is to serve school-aged children and their families. And I know when we came to you before, we said we were only going to serve school-aged children, but we really, you know, as we work through this, and they'll speak to this as well, when a family comes into the health center and several people are sick, we can't just serve just the child and send them up the street to another place. So we, and we really want to support the whole family. And they will talk a little bit about, a little bit more about this, but this I took from their site in Vegas. They provide immunization, sports physicals, well-child checks, sick visits eligibility, they're an eligibility site, they have walk-ins, they take. So there's a lot of different kinds of services that can happen. They, we, they would look at some kind of a sliding scale, insurance, Nevada checkup, Medicaid. The building at this point to start up, we are proposing that it's open five days a week, but it's only open for appointments two days a week to start. And that's, you know, again, that's our proposal right now. And that it would be open year-round, and that families that came in would not have to show citizenship in order to get services there. And the piece that's really going to be important here in making this a reality is we have applied for a community development block grant through Carson City, because we can't, we do not have the funds in the general fund to renovate this building. They're, again, through the city, they actually provide facility improvement funds. In 2012, 13, we received a grant from CDBG that actually took the portable that we're talking about tonight, that was housed at Empire, and moved it to this, and set it up on this site. So we have a history already of receiving funding through the CD, Community Development Block Grant in support of services for kids, so we're hoping that we're successful in this next round. They have $235,925 available for this year. We are going to ask for $83,598. That's what it's going to cost for this renovation, and I know that seems like a big number, but, you know, we have been working, as I said, through Mark, and this is a realistic figure in terms of getting this building to where we need it to be. And we're presenting to the Planning Division next week to see if we're going to be successful, and we'll know on March 5th. So if we are awarded funding, the funds will be available July 1st, and we hope to open in the fall. So those are, there's still a lot of ifs in there, but we have a plan, and we're hoping our plan is successful. And again, our team, Mr. Stokes, myself, Mr. Kornick, Monica Taylor, the Chief Operations Officer for Nevada Health Centers, and Darren Berger from Berger Hanifin Architecture helped us also with our plans and our cost estimates. So I wanted to just bring up Monica and introduce her, and have her introduce her staff that's with her tonight.
Good evening. My name's Monica Taylor. I'm the Chief Operations Officer with Nevada Health Centers. And with me tonight, I have Dr. Darren Rahaman. He is our Chief Medical Officer. And then Walter Davis is our President and Chief- And then Walter Davis is our President and Chief Executive Officer of Nevada Health Centers. And so I don't know if there are any questions that I can answer.
Well, tell us a little bit about your involvement, of what you see going forward for the school district.
Well, we're excited to have this particular partnership. As Valerie mentioned, we currently operate a school-based health center down in Las Vegas. And it's really been a good partnership for us to be able to provide our healthcare services to the students, families that present to, to our particular school-based clinic there. I mean, in talking with Valerie, our overall goal is that we really want to really get the care to where the students are, and that's where really the location is ideal. The services that we're able to offer, our operations, is, it's really going to help to meet a need that in talking with Valerie and her team is really something that we're prepared to meet.
Okay. Well, you know, just going back a little bit in time, what Valerie referenced, the strategic plan, and this came about by members of our community that would wanted, I mean, we're here for student achievement and, and success. Can't very well do it if, if we have, kids are not necessarily well.
Right.
And they meet it. So this is pretty important going forward. And, and what has been your success in Las Vegas? So, I mean, we've got similar demographics, much larger population, but similar demographics. What, what's been the success?
I mean, we've been able to, I mean, real-time see the students when they've had their needs. I mean, we work very closely with the school nurses for the schools, because they're kind of in the catchment area of our school-based health center. And so when kids are sick, when they come in, whether it's before or after school, our clinic right now is open seven to four. And we do partner very closely with the various principals in the, at the schools, because what we also do is we have an educational component as well, that if we can come in and provide education on dental services, for example, or education on various, you know, wellness measures, things like that, you know, there are after-school programs that we also partner with. We perform school physicals as well that we offer even before the school year gets started. And so again, really, our piece is, we want to be able to do our part and support the efforts of the school to have kids that, you know, can learn and thrive, but they have to be well and healthy. And so, I mean, that's the piece that, you know, we believe that we're able to provide, and that's been our success down in Las Vegas.
Board members?
Can I just follow up? Okay.
So how do you find the students that need the services? You mentioned working with a school nurse and, but do you have some type of program that you do at the beginning of the year, throughout the year, where you try to get the information out to the families? Because it seems, is, can anybody use the service? And if you're looking for certain, either the underinsured or the uninsured, how do you actually find them and make them aware that this is available?
Well, we'll do that in a few ways. I mean, we've already met pretty frequently with Valerie and her team, which included at least a school nurse representative, and really tried to look at identifying the need that's out there. And at that, at one of the meetings in particular, you know, the nurse had mentioned that probably on any average day, it could be upwards of 14 students that, I mean, really with, with no help, they could refer to us right away, because that's what they're seeing across the district. And I mean, we will, we've got a marketing team, and we have a plan that what we do is we make sure that the community, the schools, you know, know that we're out there, what we provide. I mean, we have gone in Las Vegas, for example, to, you know, teacher meetings or, you know, kind of PTA-type meetings, you know, really to, to explain who we are, what we do, you know, just answer any questions, provide any education. So we are actively engaged, not only with the schools, but with parents as well, so if there's any questions or follow-up that they, they have about what we provide and things like that. So again, we, it's a shared partnership between us and the school district.
Questions, Stacy?
So financially, how does it work? I mean, if they have insurance and it's not on your plan or whatever, I mean, I don't know if that's been discussed. Is there a price to us with, with the incoming visits and stuff if they're not insured?
Well, what we'll do, the first part of your question, I mean, we're, we operate our school-based health centers like we do our community health centers in the communities that we serve. And so we do, we bill any commercial insurance. We do also have funding for students that are identified as homeless. And so we've got special funding that's set aside for that, and so those services go against that grant. We have a guest relations program when Valerie, on the slide, when she talked about eligibility options. Our guest relations team will meet with students' families, because especially with the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid expansion, a lot of people aren't sure or don't know the process to go through to apply, and we can help them with that. And then if all else fails, you know, if they don't qualify, aren't eligible for a lot of different reasons, we also have a sliding fee scale program that's based on income. And so again, we go after, we look at the federal poverty guidelines, and we have minimum amounts, that again, for those that, you know, meet that criteria, you know, that's what they'll pay for the services. And then we set up payment arrangements, things like that. I mean, so we work very closely to make sure that there's no deterrent, you know, and, you know, for, to receive our services.
Thank you. I'm really excited, because the thing that we have here in the community, you guys, when you guys came to this community and you built that big building on College Parkway, and it's gorgeous, the staff is great, and I've just heard great things about it. And so I'm really excited that a piece of it's coming to the school district.
And that one is so busy.
Yeah, we, that one, you know, we, in our conversations, that they, they can't meet the demand and the waiting list for people to be served. And in our conversations about how, an average of 14 students or, or family members would have to be served on any given day to make it a viable operation, and we definitely don't feel like that's going to be a problem at all for us. Just our nurses alone could provide referrals with that many students on a regular basis.
Comments from your other two associates here?
Thank you, President, to the rest of the board members. First of all, I definitely, my name is Walter Davis again. I am the President and Chief Operating Officer for Nevada Health Centers. And this is actually a, one of our strategic goals is to operate three to five school-based medicine programs within our communities that we serve. So we certainly look forward to it. I think it's a great opportunity for us, and we definitely look for additional expansion of our services throughout the community. So just like to say, if we partner with you, we want to reach every family that's out there and provide them the care that everyone deserves from a healthcare standpoint. So we definitely look forward to the partnership, and so, and we report back to you the success of us reaching out and taking care of those many lives that we touch every day. So thank you very much for the opportunity to even be presented to this board today, to have this as a continued growth and effort in our community to have healthcare services to meet the needs. So thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Just a question I have. The $83,000 that you're requesting in the grant for the renovations, does that also include the equipment, the tables, the medical, basic medical setups for that?
No. Nevada Health Centers has committed to providing that, but we're going to look for additional funding as well, because it's, it's still a big-ticket item. The CDBG grant is very specific to, to the, you know, to the overall building.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Well, Valerie, thank you. And thank you to all of the representatives from Nevada Health Centers for, for coming, and Mr. Stokes, for your involvement, and hopefully this all works out and works out soon.
Yes.
We're going now to Agenda Item.
Agenda Item, which is now number eight, which is the informational update on Jumpstart College Program between Western Nevada College and Carson City School District.
Susan Kima for the record. Last spring, myself and John Kinkella, Dean of Students from Western Nevada College, shared with you the details about Jumpstart College, a new collaboration between the Carson City School District and our local higher education entity. The goal of that was to challenge our 12th grade students to take more than the minimum credits their senior year, and to pursue an avenue towards college and career with an authentic experience of being in the college itself. This meets strategic plan goals of 1.1.2 community and full partnership and 4.2.1 special programs of study with exposure to authentic college and career experiences. So tonight, we're gonna, we've finished first semester, and we're here to give you an update. And with me, I have with us here, tonight, we have two students who've been involved in the program, and I'll introduce them in a little bit, a representative from the college and Principal Fuson from Carson High. But first, what I'm going to do is give you a broad-based overview. I want you to know that this project was not just a partnership with Carson City School District, but also a partnership with five districts in our surrounding area, Churchill County, Douglas Line, and Story County, and ourselves. And there's some big numbers up there. And our numbers were, we had, I believe, 23 students that participated in the first cohort. I believe one moved away and, and one decided not to continue on. So we'll have 21 students going into second semester. And our students will earn, they earn, were able to earn nine credits this first semester, and will be able to earn 12 second semester. Looking at this data, the data that's compiled, I need to tell you that, my disclaimer is that WNC put this data together, and they held a roundtable after the first semester with all the area principals and counselors to talk about, you know, improvements and to thank them for their, their efforts. So I'm using this data tonight to show you what others have seen. So as WNC compiled the data, you can see up there the math completion rate for WNC students, and then the overall Jumpstart students. These are the students from all five counties. This is the big picture. So you can see we have a 96%, 96.4% pass rate for math in the five-county district area, and for English, we have a 98.5% pass rate, a little bit higher. And overall course completion rate is 98.2%, which is great. It's our high school students taking college courses. And I must say that we're not a system in the state of Nevada where we're able to share freely information between K-12 and higher education. So this is one of those validating points. When we're looking at data, how well are our students prepared to go on to the next level? And with the course completion rates, that's encouraging. Also, what was shared was a, there were nine cohorts, and you can see the nine cohorts there and their course completion data. And towards the bottom, there were four cohorts, four schools where 100% of the students passed their English and completed their math as well. And for our data, data that I think you'd be most interested in seeing, is that Carson City had 100% course completion rate for both math and English. And that's when, you know, I'm thinking about all these little multiple data points of, how do we know if we're preparing our students to go on and if they're in a setup to be successful? Well, we put in, we put in support mechanisms at the high school, we put in support mechanisms at the college, and you can see academically, our students were prepared, as seniors, to take some college classes. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our students. We have with us here Sahara Winder and Mervyn Daggon, who I'd like to have come on up to the podium and have them tell you a little bit about their experience.
Hi, my name is Mervyn Daggon.
And I'm Sahara Winder. Okay. I like this program a lot, because they treated you like an adult and held you accountable for your work, so it made you like feel good when you accomplished it. And the classes were kind of hard, but they really helped on studying and stuff.
Yeah, like Sahara said, the way they treat you like an adult is really great, because unlike high school, some of my friends who are my age are still getting like bathroom passes. And I feel like that's, that's just kind of degrading. I mean, we're 18 and we're getting bathroom passes to go out. But the great thing about a college program is that it gives you freedom. And because it gives you freedom, you, you feel more like, treated like an adult. And when you're treated like an adult, it forces you to become more independent. You're relying on yourself more. So what, after taking this program, my study habits improved, my organization improved, and even my grades improved. Wouldn't you say? And the teachers are great, too. The Jumpstart program, it, it's great, because it gives you the opportunity to take classes that you can't get at high school, like such as philosophy. I, I didn't know that they, they couldn't teach philosophy at high school. I would assume it's probably because of the controversy. It's, it's about religion. So it's really great. The teachers are great. And what's great about the Jumpstart program also is that it allows you to coincide with other students that are also in college. So, and it's a lot of teamwork. So you get to meet new people, you get to, it forces you to collaborate and, you know, join together and form an idea or solve a problem.
Yeah.
So are, are both of you going on for the second, are you in the second semester now?
Yes.
Yeah. And we get to get 12 credits this time. We had a study hall for one of our periods last year, and this time, it's like an academic success class, so they'll teach us better study habits.
So in the classes, when you said they were smaller, were they just, were they composed of high school students only, or was it the full student population?
The first semester was composed of only high school students. And second semester, they, I think they brought in a couple, a couple of college students to, I'm not sure, actually. They just, they brought in a couple of college students next semester.
Well, okay, you get, okay, you're showing some enthusiasm, you know, some excitement going forward. Tasha, what is your, what is your take on this? I mean, you're the principal just coming in. Is this something you're 100% behind?
Well, yeah. I have a, my little partner in my administration, too, but okay. It's all good. Obviously, how to be politically correct. Let me see, the biggest problem that we have, which is a good, oh, Tasha Fuson, principal at Carson High School. The biggest problem that we have right now is reining these guys in, in terms of the classes that they want to take, and they just kind of want to go full bore into the college life, into the college program. And we're trying to do something that like bridges between high school to college, so it's a good problem to have, but, but a challenge for us. I mean, they, they come back with, oh, we've decided that, you know, philosophy is maybe not the class I want to take. Now I want to take, you know, I don't know, archaeologist or something like that, be an archaeologist. And so we've had kids coming in wanting to take multiple classes. So we're kind of looking at how can we be flexible with kids on that, but still make sure we communicate with parents. That's, that's kind of a challenge we're working out right now, not, and not a, not something we can't work with, but right now, the professors at WNC work with a teacher, TA, who then inputs attendance and grades into Power School, so that parents can still check up on their kids. Counselors, my whole counseling team back here, too, can check up on the kids, so that we can make sure that they're doing what they need to do. And again, as Sue showed you, our kids did 100% completion, which is fabulous. And again, as Sue showed you, our kids did 100% completion, which is fabulous, but there's still that part that we wanna make sure, because they're still our kids and they're still high schoolers, that they're successful in what they're doing and that we don't let them fall through the cracks. So how do we do that but allow them to have the freedom to be in the classes, just carte blanche classes that they want? So some challenges. But again, the cool part of it is, is it's enthusiasm on their end. It's very successful. We're not like pulling teeth to get kids to participate. And we're also looking at expanding the program in a couple different paths that actually, if Scott wants to come on up here, you wanna come on up, Scott? Scott is one of, I'm not gonna like edge you guys out, you guys can stay up here, too. Scott Morrison is from WNC and one of our, well, one of the people I talk to the most, this is funny, right? Because I have to move this microphone up like this and then down like this, I know.
You invited me up here.
I did, I did. But we've been working together and meeting a lot to look at ways that we can strengthen our partnership with Western Nevada. So it's, they've been very gracious this coming year. We will have two of our teachers on our campus teaching, I guess they would consider them remedial college-level classes, but really for a senior to take, for instance, math 095 and 096, which doesn't get you math credit at the college level, but is what they would place our students in if they didn't score it high enough, on what used to be for most of the colleges, the Accuplacer and/or with an SAT or ACT score. Now we're gonna be able to offer that on our campus. One of our teachers will teach that and work with the WNC staff to make sure that we're matching the curriculum that they would teach on their campus. We also are talking about English 095 and 098, same thing. So the students take the camp, or the course, maybe students who wouldn't qualify for Jump Start, where they're taking the actual English 101 and Math 126 at those levels. The students who don't quite make that cut will be able to take those courses on our campus. And passing those courses will guarantee them direct access into English 101 and 126 at WNC. Because, and that's important because on our Nevada School Performance Framework, that'll help us reduce the number of students requiring remediation when they go to college. So that was a way for us to address that. And then also, and I asked, actually, sorry, asked Michelle to come because we're very excited. Now we're also looking at a CTE component to Jump Start that we're looking at and calling it like a Track C. And actually, we have some papers that we're gonna give you. And we just had a meeting last week to look at these and figuring now if we have students who aren't necessarily those that wanna go to two or four-year, what you would consider a typical two or four-year college program, they're looking more at the career training, if you will. So we have construction management that will be offered for our seniors next year. We are scheduling it during the same timeframe, 8 to 11. We're actually shifting, these guys are going a little bit later this year, but next year we're gonna shift our timeframes to eight, eight in the morning till 11 and have all these programs running or these classes at the same time so our students can ride the same bus up to Western Nevada. And so we have construction management, very exciting. Those students, I think, will get up to 20 credits, I think, in that program and several certifications that go with that, which will be halfway to their associate's degree if they decide to stay on. And then there's also a four-year program, so it's an associate's of applied science, and then they can stay on for the additional two years and get a bachelor's of technology from WNC. So they're giving our kids access to that program as well. And then the other one is Automated and Industrial Systems, or AIS, which we're gonna pattern the same way. And our students will access it for the first year on our campus, again, be able to finish that one year and then go directly into the workforce if they choose to and/or do that and continue on in school if they wanna get the associate's degree. So we're branching into more of the CTE as well and getting those students prepared for, you know, the career technical education area, so manufacturing and construction. So do you wanna add in there, your part? We've met a lot.
I'm not sure you missed anything.
Okay.
I'm Scott Morrison, Director of Arts and Science at WNC. And I do wanna start by acknowledging the work, hard work creativity that Tasha has added in and Sue, and Sue Grunert as well at Carson High that has helped this to happen. I was thinking back over the development of this, and it started with a question about a few kids coming over in a bus from Virginia City to take a few classes. And it was asked to me, you know, could we put these kids in some classes? And I said, well, how many are you talking about? It was like seven. I said, yeah, that's not a problem. Well, so we ended up with 200 and it really grew. So in addressing the parents and the students early on, to get them, to get their minds straight about what they were getting into, that they needed to really choose this for themselves, because these were the same college classes that we're offering to every student. There were no changes other than really that the TA was involved to keep the students on track and to offer that extra support. We had the partnership with the high school, which was huge because we had the attendance piece there. We had also all the same support that the high school would give. We had the TA, we had the parents involved, we had the students choosing a program, and they were all qualified in both math and English to get into the program. So all the ingredients were there for what I told them, a very high success rate. And I had in the back of my mind that maybe one of these nine cohorts that we had across Northern Nevada would maybe even hit 100%. Well, four of them did, and Carson High was one of those, so that's just an outstanding achievement. We saw other schools with even 40 kids involved at 100%, and that was just an amazing, amazing thing. So they had, you know, the same PhDs teaching English 101 to these kids with the same high demands, and they, they met the challenge. Some of them maybe saw their first C in their life, but they earned the credits. And of all these, all these class attempts, 98% were successful, they actually earned the credit. So really excited going forward. Expect to see more demand for this. We hope that the college can, can get the funding that we need to help supply the, the resources that we need to as well. So happy to answer any questions.
Do you know how many kids, Carson High probably would be the most appropriate, were first generation to go to college? So say their parents did not, and they're getting this opportunity, especially to see it in a more, yeah, an easier.
You know, we haven't actually pulled the data that way, but it's interesting that you ask, because as we've, we've discussed how we wanna expand the program. In reality, I don't want it to compete with our Advanced Placement Program. I think there's a different need for students who are looking maybe at preparing themselves for, you know, going on to some big-name universities and what they would, you know, pursue. Some of our other students who are looking to maybe go to a state college, what they would pursue. Students who are looking to go into CT and what they would pursue. We wanna make sure that we have that whole gamut of our kids covered. So we, we haven't really looked at that, but in this next avenue, as we're moving into expanding it, that's one of the areas that we're gonna target. So we're working again with Western Nevada, who's obviously a fantastic partner for us. And Lupe is one of their, I don't know Lupe's last name off the top of my head. Oh, look, you all know Lupe. Look at that. Okay. I just call her Lupe. So Lupe is gonna be working with us and helping us to look at that data and do some special recruiting or invites to students, not only who are first-generation college-goers, because helping us to bridge that, that gap, but then also looking at our ELL population, too, to say, can we, can we target them as an underrepresented group at the college level and help them get set up for success on our campus, kind of help ease that transition and maybe entice students who you wouldn't typically see moving on to college? So that's the discussion that we've had, and how do we really focus in on our kids in those two particular groups?
I have a couple of questions, and it may have been on the first slide and I missed. How many students were in the Carson High cohort?
So we had 23 first semester.
Okay. And now we're down to 21.
And now we're down to 21.
Okay.
We're anticipating about, similar to the same, around 25 going into next year. Scott would like us to hit 30 because he would like to split it to two groups. One of the things that we've talked as the program has evolved is that in reality, and the students kind of alluded to it as well, that really it works better if there's a mix of not just high school students, if we can actually bring in students that are typical WNC students so that you don't have a traveling cohort. So it's kind of that, that balance of how can we make sure we have that support for our kids? How can we make sure we're still being able to monitor their participation in the program? But how can we let go of the, the apron strings a little bit to let them experience that true college kind of situation or scenario that they would be in? So we're trying to figure out how to, how to do that right now, and those are some of the questions that we're, you know, touching base on. The good thing is, is one of the things that have changed already for next year, again, the students alluded to, is that we started this year with three college courses and a study hall. Midsemester, as we were heading into second semester conversations, we all kinda decided the kids didn't really need that study hall, or at least just study hall to have study hall. Therefore, we changed it to an EPY class, as they mentioned, which gives them college credit. And going into next year, instead of only having, so the original thought was to give them access to 18 credits in a year. These students are actually gonna get 21, and going into next year, it will be 24, because we will be offering them four college courses first semester and four second semester. So instead of having that, that study period, it will be replaced with a college course and we'll be teaching the EPY that they're taking now, or they will be teaching the EPY that they're taking now for a semester. So that was some of the, the, the things that we've changed midway as we've gone, just trying to look in response to what the kids' needs are and what we thought would be most beneficial for them.
I have another question with that. Do the credits, as they're earning and they earn college credit, are they also earning credits towards their high school? Is that passing off our high school requirements diploma?
Yes.
Not to compete with the AP classes, but they're...
Absolutely. They get dual credits for it, so they get dual high school and college credit. So that's another one of the questions that has come into play in terms of planning, is that if we have an AP level course, previously, we've not allowed the students to access that course at the college level for dual credit. So it doesn't compete, but we're having to kind of, again, massage that a little bit, like psychology is when we offer psych AP on campus. So in the past, we would not have let them take psychology at WNC, but we're, we're coming to the table, so like I said, we can look at what can we offer our kids? Not lessen our AP program, but still have a really solid Jump Start program for the students to access and, and still support them in their aspirations about what degree programs that they want to do. Because that's what happened. We thought, oh, it would be simple. We'll give them English 101, we'll give them Math 126. What did we give them the first semester? The other one?
Anthropology.
Anthropology. Right? So we thought, oh, great. But what comes of that is, oh, I don't necessarily need anthropology for my career field. Or moving into second semester, I really need, we had a student who needed a math, a different math course because he was going into, I don't know, engineering or something of that. So depending on what they're studying at the college or what their intention is of studying in future years, that can also dictate about what they take in terms of those core classes. So we've had conversations on that. Again, Scott has been fantastic, helping us brainstorm some ideas around that, which is, actually, we switched a course that they were gonna take second semester to the philosophy course because it was more global in terms of its application to those programs. And then looking at giving them an option between two different electives next year per semester to give them a little bit of, again, depend, are you fine arts? Are you business? What are you needing to focus on and what applies best to your, your program of studies?
Scott, can, can you speak to the, the credits, the, the level of academics it is? And not, not that the credits just apply towards WNC, but maybe other schools that they can go to with that?
Right.
Yeah.
So all of the credits that, that they're enrolled in, and we're, we're very careful to choose them so that, that they would apply widely, because a lot of these students are probably science students, associate of science, bachelor of science students. But if not, they're really earning their core credits at UNR, what we call general education credits. And if they finish an associate's degree with us, that transfers seamlessly anywhere in Nevada and they would have all of their core finished. So we choose courses that way. We also like to try to give them a little bit of selection in there, too, because that's a part of college as well. But, you know, we wanna minimize that to try to make sure that they make those good choices in the first semester and the second semester. The courses do transfer. It's been checked out. There was a student in, I think in Fernley, who was being recruited for a golf scholarship to, I believe, Stanford. And her, one of her parents checked into transferability of all the courses that they were enrolling in. And in Fernley, they were in history, math, English, and then communications one semester and I think a psychology another semester. And all of those credits were approved, so that really set them at ease as far as that program went.
Now, that's to keep in mind that there's so many colleges in the country that it's impossible to make sure that you're matching or addressing all of those. So that's one of the things that the counselors have to work with the students and their families on, is that it's not a given that what you take, but it would be the same if you were not in this kind of a program. So even if you went to UNR, for instance, and went there for two years and then transferred, not necessarily all of your, you know, your credits would transfer from there. So it's, it's about making sure that our kids are making thoughtful decisions, and we're trying to make sure that we help them do that. Because we had those conversations when it came to picking those elective options for the kids, is what would, and we focused on, and UNR, as, and UNLV, so the Nevada Systems of Higher Ed, in terms of which would be most likely to fill those cores in the Nevada System of Higher Ed of our students, which hopefully they all will continue on for a four-year degree.
I have a question for the kids.
Okay.
Or the students.
It's not a big one, but I know, Sierra, especially you were very involved at Carson High the last three years. You guys still stay involved because it's easier senior year?
You do lose some social aspects, but like, if, today we had an assembly and if we wanted to go, we got out at 12:30 anyway, so it was at 1:00. So we, we can still be involved, it's just like pep rallies and stuff. So it's kinda, but not really. It's like you have to push yourself extra if you wanna go be a part of the high school or not. So it's like your decision.
You feel the same way?
On involvement, it's actually really limited, considering, because we only have one class in, at high school for government or another elective. So yeah, it's definitely, you have to get more involved, you know, take time out of your day to go back to school and get involved in pep rallies or go to football games or basketball games.
So do you think the trade-off is worth it?
The trade-off? I, I think it's definitely worth it because you're getting a head start, you know? I, I think it's great in my degree, I hope to get in engineering. I think that the quicker I can get there, the better.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things that we were very strategic, and again, Western Nevada was fantastic and working with us on, is how do we schedule it during the part of the day where the kids can have the most access? So having it at the timeframe that these guys have it at makes it strange, it's like in the middle of the day. Next year, going from 8 to 11, our students will be able to come back to the campus and take B, oh, A5, B6, and AB55, so they can actually take three classes on campus should they choose to do so. These students right now, since they're getting all their cores filled at the, at WNC, with the exception of government, that's why most of them, if they haven't taken government and some are taking government and that's the one class. But they could take more if they wanted to. They're not required to, right?
Well, you know, I just have a comment. When I see the kids, the kids, the students that are excited about doing something, this is what was badly needed, because we have that segment of the population that is ready to go. And, and we have to, you know, to let, let go with guidance and, and because we still have responsibilities, but it's obvious, these two are ready to, to reach out and go way beyond. So I, you know, thank you very much for that. The second part of this, with the CTE component coming on, with both the construction management and the automated, automotive, Automated and Industrial Systems, the manufacturing side of this, and I'll speak to WNC. Kevin Edwards at WNC has worked with us from day one in our strategic plan, has brought in industrial partners, we've shared industrial partners, and he's worked with the kids to lay the foundation. So I believe that part is ready to go and, and I just sent a lot of kudos to, you know, to Kevin and his efforts. But overall, for all of you, Ms. Kima, you know, you've done a tremendous job in this, Richard. I mean, this thing is, is really one more step forward and, and I think we've all kept in mind, it's for the students, student achievement and success, success in life, what will work. And, and I think we stepped out and found a way to, to take that farther. So thank you so very much. So thank you so very much. Any other?
Any other comments?
Anybody in the audience want to comment? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on agenda item now, agenda item number, which is now number nine, the informational update on the Carson City School District Race to the Top Grant to Include Carson City School District's School Counselors. We're waiting for this. Okay. And that's Dr. Steve Prudair and Alan Goslin.
Alan Goslin, Carson City School District. President Swarzick, members of the board. I always look forward to coming and speaking before you. One, it's great for me to have a chance to celebrate the work that I'm involved in, but also, as a member of the audience, to hear all the other great work that's going on. At this point, I think it's appropriate to commend the board on the courage and effort that it took to bring stakeholders from across the community together to develop the vision that culminated in the strategic plan. It's a magnificent plan in its simplicity, five goals, but also in its comprehensiveness. And I think we're seeing the fruits of that labor tonight and at every board meeting. It's very exciting. Trustee Kontine, I also want to recognize the efforts of your husband, Ben Kontine, in facilitating that process. He was instrumental in it becoming a reality. Trustee Green, you might not be aware, but I was, I've only been here for a year and a half. I chose to come to Carson City to be a part of this work from a district 15 miles to the south that I shall not name. They're playing basketball tonight, so I don't want to jinx anything. For two reasons. One was because of the strategic plan, and its clarity, and its comprehensiveness, but also the fact that, in addition to the strategic plan, there was a plan of support, of specific action steps, that put things in place to make that plan a reality in the short span of five years. A plan that was articulated so well that was recognized at the national level, and it brought millions of dollars in funding to the district. And so I think it's appropriate to also recognize the work of Dr. Stephen Prudair for making, bringing the support that's making it possible in such a short span of time to realize the goals of the strategic plan. Thank you, Dr. Prudair. Another part of the work in making this a reality is the personnel. And I've worked my first year in curriculum instruction, mainly with science and CTE, and then as Ben Kontine was, had the opportunity to move into administration, I took on the role now of working with a group of people that, whose work often goes unrecognized, because their work is behind the scenes, but they are a group of people that, of all the employees, get to touch the lives of all students that moves through our system. And those are the district counselors. And trustee, or President Swarzick, thank you for putting this on the agenda, giving the counselors an opportunity to speak tonight and share their work. I'd like to recognize the counselors that are here in the audience. From Pioneer, we have Kerry Jordan. From Carson Middle School, Allison Young, Roger Churchill, and Whitney Tines. From Eagle Valley Middle School, our newest addition to the counselor team, Renee Oliver. From Carson High School, we have Monica Weaver, Lupe Schofield, Mandy Chambers, and Cindy Reyes. And also from Carson High School, two that will be speaking tonight, Nikki Handy, our career cruising guru, Susan Grunert, our department chair, and from Eagle Valley Middle School, our student-led conferences guru, Sherry Mathis. Today, we want to share two things with you. One, share the complexity and comprehensiveness of the work of counselors, and then talk about a couple of specific innovations that are in place, that are being driven by the counselors to assure that all students leave Carson City School District college and career-ready. And it's my pleasure to introduce, from Eagle Valley Middle School, Ms. Sherry Mathis.
Hey, I'm Sherry Mathis, and I'm one of the two counselors at Eagle Valley. And I am going to start off with just a short anecdote, and this happened two or three years ago. It was an afternoon, and I was at school doing duty, and counselors do do duty, and supervise halls and that kind of thing. And I was upstairs, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with Eagle Valley, but it is a multi-layered school, and we have steps going up and down. And it was a snowy day, and I had on brand-new patent leather shoes. And this is important to the story, let me tell you, as any woman here knows, shoes. So this little boy is having a meltdown in the upstairs hall. He is trying to pack a backpack full of books. He's got a math book hanging out of it. He is absolutely going into meltdown mode. And I decide I need to help him. So I help him. We try to stuff the backpack closed, can't get it closed, he's going to miss his bus, we've got books hanging out. I pick up the backpack, race with the kid down two flights of stairs, arrive out back, and of course, what happens? You all know what happens, because you've been there, the bus is pulling out. So I turn to the kid, and I say, we're going to get this taken care of, we're going to call your mom, at which point, he says, stop the buses! And flies across the backyard. Now remember, I'm in my patent leather shoes, and there's snow. So I go flying after him, I have his backpack still, and he gets up to, of course, where was the bus? The first one in the line, and he stands there. So once again, I lean down, heavily out of breath at this time, and I say, we're going to get this taken care of, at which point, he says, stop the buses! And heads up across the field, up the flight of stairs. Now remember, I'm not in shape, and I'm wearing patent leather shoes, and there's snow on the ground. I head up after him, I make it to the top, collapse on the top three steps, prostrate, literally, because I can't breathe anymore, at which point, this kid's still heading down towards Fifth Street. Stop the buses! I grab the band teacher's leg, and I said, Mr. Brill, stop Frank! He takes off, and to make a long story short, he grabs Frank, we get him back, we call mom, we get him calmed down, we get mom to pick him up, he goes. I'm not sure that's a bad metaphor for life, stop the buses. But I'll tell you, that day, I was a security officer, and I was a parent liaison, and I was a lot of things to a lot of people. And I tell this anecdote to anyone who will listen, because I think a lot of times, the perception is among the public, the counselor sits behind closed doors and kind of talks about feelings. And we, I'm more likely to save a kid by, you know, from getting crushed by a bus than I am to sit behind closed doors and talk about feelings on any given day. With that in mind, we only have a few minutes, and we did, it's hard to narrow down what a counselor does, because it looks different from day to day and moment to moment. And that particular moment, I happened to be the one there, and my job was to make sure that kid didn't get crushed by a bus. And that's what I did. And I don't know that a master's training program prepares you for that exactly. So you can kind of divide what we do up into three distinct areas, and none of them is keeping kids from getting squished by a bus, or being a safety officer. But the first one is certainly what that was, which is responsive counseling, and that's, you know, those immediate concerns that counselors deal with all the time. And those are big concerns, as well as little concerns. That's the kid who presents in our office who might be considering suicide, or having to write a report to, you know, the Department of Child and Family Services. That might be as easy as a conflict mediation, or as minor as saving a kid, you know, from getting crushed by a bus. The second one, college and career readiness, is really where we put most of our sort of organized efforts, and especially at the secondary level, which is getting those kiddos ready for what lies beyond high school. Whether that's in scheduling, making a master schedule to meet the needs of kids, whether that's talking with individual students about the classes they're going to take, you know, we're adding in our career pathways with some more purposeful scheduling choices in mind. That's tracking grades, that's, you know, mentoring kids, contacting parents about grades, getting our kiddos on CC Engage, which we're going to talk about in a minute, student-led conferencing, talking about scholarships, trade schools, the military, and the stuff like that. Social awareness, you see really at the middle school level, although it's everywhere, but you know, we're looking at teaching some long-time skills, you know, things like how to get along, you know, not to bully, looking at conflict mediations, and things of that nature. One thing that I kind of laugh about, and I think every counselor here behind me can agree, is, you know, we really do hold the story of the whole kid, counselors do, we're the liaison between everybody. And I may not be able to tell you the name of every child I work with, but I can pretty much tell you their story. I can tell you what their parents are like, what the situation is like at home. I can pretty much tell you their GPA and how many credits they've got, because that's part of my job. This is our official mission statement, and it's really just a more comprehensive way of saying what I just said. We're looking for student success through academic achievement, we're looking at equity, we're looking at getting them ready for year 13, and we're looking for academic success, and making sure that we have everything in place so that those kids can be successful. As part of the strategic plan, where we really come into play are those first two, a community in full partnership and engaged families. That's part of our job as liaisons, is to pull together families and students, teachers, making sure everybody's engaged, and making sure that everything that kids do is transparent. We want parents to know what their kids are doing, and kids to know, you know, to be able to talk with their parents about what they're doing. We want teachers to be involved in that process, and we want to be sort of the gatekeeper for all of that. What we're looking for with some of the Race to the Top stuff, and a couple of the new things that we're talking about tonight, is to make our students more informed and more empowered. And part of that is looking at the career focus, and we're looking at pulling that down to sixth grade. So even our sixth graders now are looking at academic plans, and what their career choices may be. Now, a lot of them still say they want to be in the NFL, you know? You know, I have a lot of pro soccer players, but, you know, we try to kind of move it a little bit beyond that for them, and get them start thinking in the right direction. Our big push is really for purposeful planning. You know, gone are the days when kids can say, oh, I like art, I'm going to take an art class. Oh, I like this, I'm going to take this. We want more purposeful planning. We want them to kind of think about what their long-term goals are going to be, what's going to get them there. Have fun, enjoy, you know, risk, and explore, but also be purposeful. Another big push for us is kind of making informed transitions from middle school to high school. We want to make a clear, linear progression. We want kids to start thinking in sixth grade about where they're going to be later on, and helping them make that transition. And then, of course, with all of the fun things happening at the high school with CTE, we want to have more of an alignment with the career and technical education. So in line with that, we're going to have Nikki Handy come up, she's at the high school, and she is our career cruising CC Engage guru, and she can fill you in on what's happening with that, which is a pretty exciting program. We're pretty pleased with it.
Nikki Handy, Carson High School. We are very excited about career cruising. Part of the grant was to put in place an e-portfolio system for all students, sixth through 12th grade. And in looking at how we were going to make that happen, it was first thought that here are all the things that we want that e-portfolio to house, and we were going to build that from the ground up. And we talked to Janice, and said, are you sure you really want to build this? I mean, I'm pretty sure we can find somebody out there that already does this. So we did some research, we narrowed it down to four companies, and we ended up going with career cruising. And we're very pleased with this product. We're very excited. We've rolled it out sixth through ninth grade, and we are working on building that up through the 12th grade. So you can see, this is my personal career cruising front page. And so when students log in, this is what they see at first. So you can see my progress bar shows how far on our completion standards I've gotten, and the completion standards are in the packet that you should have. So we chose standards that we wanted students to be completing through career cruising at every grade level, sixth through 12. So I believe that on this, I was at a ninth grade, I put myself in as a ninth grader, so I would have completed 50% of the completion standards for a ninth-grade student. Below that, you can also see there's quotes daily about different careers, as well as a focus on a specific career that changes each time that the students log in. Across the top, you can see there's several different tools that are available on career cruising. So there's a few different assessments that students can take. There's a career matchmaker, where students answer several different questions about careers. Do you like to work with food? Do you want to work with children? Do you want to work with computers? All sorts of different questions, and it gives them a list of the top 40 careers that match their interests. That can be filtered based on high school diploma, two-year degree, four-year degree, so it can be customized to the student. The career section has several different components. It talks about how much money you can make, what the different job outlook is around the nation, as well as for the state, the education that a student would need in order to go into that field, as well as related careers, and interviews with a male and a female in each of those careers. In the education, students can look at their education options in Nevada and across the United States. Those can be career schools, two-year universities, four-year universities, so there's links to the different schools, and it has all sorts of information about tuition, enrollment, et cetera. There's also the financial aid section, which has a financial aid sort, so they can put in their demographics, test scores, things like that, and it'll give them a list of scholarships, national scholarships that link to what they would qualify for, as well as a link to the FAFSA. And then the employment section, they can build their resume, so they can enter volunteer work, school activities, things like that, and it'll help them build a resume, as well as tips on how to search for a job, how to dress for an interview, what kind of questions that you should ask in an interview, and things like that. So you can see here, this is one of, personally, my favorite things, is this job suitable for you? So when a student, sometimes they think, well, gosh, I really want to be a marine biologist, and it's not on my list. Why isn't it on my list? And we can have them look at that career, and they can see why that job wasn't on their list. Well, it says that you don't like science. So if you don't like science, maybe marine biology isn't the right path for you. So let's look and see what are some of those jobs that are on your list. They can also, you know, look at that and see why maybe some of the jobs that they wouldn't have expected were on there. So maybe something in construction technology maybe is on their list, so they can see why. Well, it looks like you like to work with your hands, and things like that. It's also listed, the careers are all listed by career cluster, so these are the 16 national career clusters, which we also can break down into the six state ones. It's not built that way on the site, but when we have those conversations with students, we can talk about those six career clusters that Nevada recognizes. And you can see, there's also a link down at the bottom for military careers, and those are listed by job category, as well as by service branch. The undergraduate school selector that I mentioned, this is where students can filter schools, based on what they're looking for. So this specifically is four-year colleges in the state of Nevada. So you can see, we are trying to use this program to have those purposeful conversations with our students about the pathways that they want to take, the decisions that they want to make, the colleges that they might want to apply to, the scholarships that they're looking for. So that's helping us to really target those conversations that we can have with students, as well as with parents. A great thing that career cruising offers is a communication tool, where we can send messages to students based on specific criteria, so we can find students that are interested in going to the University of Nevada Reno, and send them a message to let them know that we have a representative on campus on a specific day, for example. Counselors have access to all of the students, everything that they've put into their portfolio. So if a student uploads a piece of work into their portfolio, we can see that. We can see the jobs, the careers that the career matchmaker has linked to that student, as well as the ones that the student themselves have chosen for themselves as a career of interest. So we're hoping that this really leads to some purposeful planning for our students, for what comes beyond high school for our students, and looking at career opportunities, as well as continuing education for every student. So whether that be directly into the job force, a two-year college, a trade school, a four-year university, or into the military, that we can really have those purposeful conversations with our students. And as well as with parents. And so this is also going to be a tool that we can use with parents, so parents will have access for their students as well. And it will be used within our student-led conferences, which I am going to give back to Sherry to talk about.
You know, the nicest thing about CC Engage, too, is you can't mess it up. There is nothing you can do. You can't, you can't lose information, and you can keep doing it as much as you want. So if you can manage to keep from getting crushed by a bus, you're in good shape. Student-led conferencing, this is one of our biggest claims to fame, and we've done really, really well with it, and we're continuing to grow every year with our student-led conferences. And CC Engage is going to be a huge part of this year in our student-led conferences. The pilot was 2011, and we started that at Eagle Valley, and then the following year went over and added on to Carson Middle School. And then we are actually starting student-led conferencing at the high school this year with our ninth-grade class. So we get about an 86% to 96% participation rate. It varies a little bit from year to year, but for the most part, we have a very high participation rate. participation rate. Most of the comments are overwhelmingly positive. We've got all kinds of different PowerPoints on this that have been presented each year from Eagle Valley. But overwhelmingly, the comments are positive from students, parents, and teachers about student-led conferencing. Student-led conferencing is a chance for the kiddo to sit down with the parent and talk about what's going on, their challenges, their strengths, their goals. What we've done this year is made this kind of a hybrid, online and paper and pencil for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Sixth, seventh, and eighth will be doing some of their classwork that they share with their parents will be paper and pencil. Some will be uploaded to CC Engage. They are doing Matchmaker in sixth and seventh grade, which is a chance to not get matched up for dates, but get matched up with careers. I had a student ask me that today. I'm like, "Are you looking for a prom date already? This is only middle school." But it's to match careers and career interests and gets them kind of talking about that. We've started sitting down with our kiddos and doing our academic plans. And already, the comments about CC Engage are pretty positive. A lot of them start the conversations with, "Oh, this came up," or "This didn't come up." So it's been a real positive thing. So they'll be sharing those results at their student-led conferencing with their parents. For our eighth graders, the student-led conference is going to focus a lot about high school registration, what courses they're going to take, what options are open to them, what career pathways they might start looking at, as well as their strengths and challenges and some of their coursework. So really successful with our student-led conferencing. We don't see that stopping anytime ever because it is really positive. So with that, that's just kind of an overview of our two newest things in counseling. And if we can answer any questions, we'll be glad to try to do that.
We did want to invite you, if you wanted to be able to go on to Career Cruising and kind of check it out yourselves. We do have a demo site, so we could get usernames and passwords so that you are able to kind of see what the students are seeing, if you just want to contact me for that information.
First question, I have a couple of questions. The first question is, when are you meeting with the students to do this? They have full schedules. I know my middle schoolers have an encore class. Does this take place in that class? Or is this a pull students out of class to meet with them? When do you fit that during their school day?
So at Eagle Valley, they're doing it in the academic strategies classes at Carson Middle School and the encore classes. And for our ninth graders, they're doing it in the freshman transitions class.
And then my second question is, with the Career Cruising that is online and stored and all of the counselors have access to it, what kind of security do we have for that from other students, from other sources? How secure is that?
I don't know if you want to speak to that. Security on Career Cruising? Every student has their own login and password. So hopefully, that information, they would keep secure. But as far as the way we use it, we would just like sit down with our students if we're talking to them. We meet with our students yearly, so sitting down with them, bringing up their portfolios and talking to them, I'm not sure if there's anything more.
If you're talking about the hosting environment that it's in, it aligned with all the privacy and all of the other rights to keep that information secure and not be shared or sold to anybody else.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow on that, because I'm pretty sure my son did one of these. I don't know if it was this Career Cruising, but he told me about, you know, a list of jobs that, you know, he might be interested in someday. And, you know, over time, I mean, just thinking about him, I mean, he's been pretty solid for a long time. But as kids kind of grow and mature and change, so are you then tracking that? So that in the sixth grade, you know, you said that, you know, pro soccer players, that's might not show up on this list. But like, is it every time they go in and kind of, are they going to redo the assessment or redo the questionnaire every year? And at, you know, at what point do they, you know, are they planning for that, I guess?
They have, there's kind of a multi-tiered career matchmaker. So the first year in sixth grade, they'll do, I think it's the first 39 questions. And then the second year, they'll add to that and do the next 40 or whatever it is. And then I think it's 117 total. So by the time they're eighth graders, they will have taken all 117 questions. And then we are going to actually have them redo that, the entire battery of 117 questions. It really only takes about 15 minutes at most during their ninth grade year. And then I would encourage my, you know, I've been working with my 11th grade students and encouraging them to do it as well, although it's not built into a class the same way it is for our sixth through ninth graders. We are encouraging our students to use that. So it's definitely something that can be redone and they can save it under a different name. So if they save it as ninth grade matchmaker, then that can kind of clarify for them which time it was that they took that.
I'm going to add, we're also doing academic plans with the kiddos. And you should see one for your son. Sixth grade or seventh? Six, probably not yet. Because we're going to, we're doing the seventh grade and then flipping to eighth and then sixth. But in that academic plan, which is on paper this year, it will be uploaded to CC Engage next year, once we figure out the easiest way to do that without creating a lot of extra work for the counselors. Part of that is to start creating that history with them. And I think kids get a real big kick out of seeing how they've changed. And it's fun for a ninth grader to go back and look and go, "Oh, my gosh, that's what I was thinking in sixth grade." Or, you know, so it's kind of helping them create their own history and not start from scratch each year. So hopefully, they'll see some of that in that academic plan as well.
And I did include an academic plan for the high school, kind of a demo right now, but in the packet that you have as well. So you can see that students will be able to see all four years, so any classes that they have taken and completed for any previous years, as well as classes that they have planned to take. And it also has a graduation tracker, so that students can keep track of their progress towards graduation.
Okay, I have a comment. Let's go back to what was presented right from the beginning. As counselors, it was stated that you touch, you're the ones that most likely are going to touch every student in the school district. And it ties everything together with what we're doing, the learner center model and Race to the Top, the strategic plan. And we're now into this thing, you know, a few years. As counselors, you've been here for a while. Have you seen a difference in your role as a counselor? Maybe I could hear from each one of you.
Myself, I moved from a middle school to the high school, so it's definitely been a huge change for me. But I do believe that this, the sense of purposeful planning has really been the biggest shift. You know, often, we would have students that just come in and say, "Well, I want to be a forensic, you know, somebody works for CSI." And so we'd kind of talk about that. But now we can really have those conversations of, well, are your skills really where they need to be? Are your interests really where they need to be? And it's really more of that purposeful decision-making.
I'm Susan Gruner, counselor at the high school. And I would definitely concur with what Nikki said. I think that in the past, we've had a lot of kids that blanketly say, "Oh, I want to be a nurse. I want to be a doctor. I want to be a CSI investigator." That's a big one. And I think now, through this process, with the start of freshman transitions last year at the high school, and the kids really going through the interest inventories and purposely looking at that, we get kids that come into our office much more focused on a true pathway with what they might actually go into in the future.
I think counseling has gone from something that, I think there's a couple of big changes. One is, I think it's moved much more from reactive to proactive. And you can't ever get away from reactive, you can't ever get away from being somewhat reactive sometimes as a counselor. There has to be someone who deals with emergencies. And like I said at the beginning, if a kid comes in and is talking about suicide, you know, and everything has to drop. That really has to be what's happening in that moment. I think what's changed is that we're much more proactive with some of the college and career and year 13 planning. CC Engage helps us do that. Student-led conferencing helps us do that. Academic plans help us do that. It's much more purposeful in not only the way we interact with our students and talk with our students and help them plan, but we now have some kind of really great tools to do this with. And CC Engage is one of those. The other thing I think is big is, for years, you know, counselors can hide behind the secrecy. "Well, everything's confidential. I can't tell you what they say in my office." You know? I think we're really moving away from that and becoming much more transparent. And I think the CC Engage helps with that. You know, there are confidential things always, there are going to be things that kids disclose and I can't share. But, you know, much of this career stuff is not secretive. It's very transparent. Kids are excited to talk about it. They're excited to talk with us about what comes up on CC Engage. They're excited to share that with their parents. We've seen that through student-led conferencing. And as much as they whine and groan about it, and they do, when the conference actually happens and they're sitting there with their parents, we get almost 100% positive feedback. I mean, almost always. So kids like to talk about what they're doing. And I think they like the structure and they like the purposeful planning. And through this grant, we've been given some really great tools to do this. So that's, I think, the two biggest changes that I've seen.
Has there been a lot of changes in connecting with teachers?
I think so. I think, yes, I think so. And teachers are as much a part of the CC Engage and student-led conferencing as anybody else. This is the first year of CC Engage, so as we get much more comfortable with the program, I think teachers are going to wind up using it a lot. And dovetailing with a lot of our different departments. For example, on CC Engage, I know I feel like I'm selling it and I'm not trying to. I get no commission on CC Engage. It's just a great program. And like I said, you can't hurt it, which is huge for me. But you know, one of the components is, for instance, being able to build a resume and being able to add, over the years, your hobbies and your awards and your accomplishments. That can be used in our English classes, because it's generally the English department that does kind of a career unit at the end of the year and does some different, invites some different speakers in and does, you know, they do a career day and they do some interviews. So I think all of this is going to really dovetail, you know, the relationship between teachers and counselors and what they're doing in their classes.
I just want to make a comment I'm noticing about the student-led conferences. The surveys are very, very positive. But it seems to me, I can't remember what the survey was last year when my student son had one, but it seems like you're dealing with already biased participants. This is my kid. Of course, he did a great job. I'm going to have a positive reaction to it. So I would hope that there'd also be an open-ended question to something. I just came from teacher, you know, teacher conferences, parent-teacher conferences, to the student-led conference. And while that was good, I felt like it was information that I knew already about him. And I didn't feel like I had the connection to the teachers that I had in the past. I, at the middle school, had to work to meet the teachers. So while you're getting positive feedback on that, those are parents that are already proud of what their child's doing. So I'd also look into maybe some sort of question, how is their, you know, have they had contact with, meaningful contact with their children's parents or teachers?
And you can have any of that data. This was very short and succinct, and we do divide that out. And I've got all of that. I will tell you, we do get some comments that they would like more, some more interaction with the teachers. And I'll tell you who that generally comes from, our top-notch parents with top-notch kids. It seems to me that student-led conferencing overwhelmingly is most positive for that middle-of-the-road kid and for that lower-end kid, who may or may not have those conversations with their parents. And it's not always positive, because the kids don't always have positive stuff to share. But I think the experience is positive. And I'll give you, for one example, we had a kid, this was three or four years ago, back when we first started. This kid's parent was going through his work, and he didn't have any work. And, you know, the parent was noticing that around them, all of these other students are pulling out papers. And the parent said, "I think they caught me in the hall," and said, "You know, I'm really shocked. My kid has no work." Well, I'll tell you, that did better than any parent conference could have, because the parent realized, you know, we need to make some changes here. So sometimes, it's the process itself that's positive. And I don't, I think speaking to you is kind of like speaking to the choir, because all of you guys are invested in your children's education. Not all parents are quite to that same level. So I think it kind of goes across the board. But for the most part, and you know, you're always going to get a couple who don't like it. We had one comment last year, it was kind of funny. A kid wrote, "Whoever came up with these must hate kids." And then there was a big cookie debacle the year before. They wanted chocolate chip instead of lemon cookies at the, you know. So you get those, you know, kind of negative comments too, but overwhelmingly, it's been pretty positive. Positive enough for us to keep doing it. I mean, we, it's something that we wouldn't even consider stopping, because we get that much good out of it.
Sorry. I'm not saying anything to do away with it, but I still feel like there's some, there could be more interaction between teachers and parents as well. And how can we foster that to foster the family engagement?
Well, to the counselors, thank you for all that you do for students.
I just wanted to thank you all for coming, because some of you didn't speak. And it's nice to see faces with the new names with the counselors. And I know you guys are both busy in your scheduling. And we appreciate you being here, especially at this hour.
Any comments from Alan or Steve? Closing remarks?
Yeah, you asked how things have changed. Things have changed, not only for counselors, but also in the career office. We have community partners that come in and offer services. And we have a program, we're calling it Future Friday. Every Friday, we have a partner come in from business and industry. And now when Jenna Damon comes in from NDOT, or Jeff Glass comes in from New Entrepreneurs, we don't just make contact with students through an announcement, a general announcement, or even just going to classes. We can specifically do a query through Career Cruising, based on their matchmaker results, and look at that, target students with a specific interest. They might not be in a business class, but their results from Career Cruising may suggest that they have an aptitude or an interest in business. And we can communicate with them and do more targeted marketing for presentations and career experiences like that. So it's changing the work for counselors, for the career office, and it will change the work for teachers as well in supporting college and career readiness. Like any tool, tools get more useful as the craftsmanship develops, and that will develop over time. But already, in a short period of time, it's had an impact. Excited to say that.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, the only comment I really want to make is a thank you to these people, because it's kind of been their vision to grow this program, to apply the use of CC Engage, to bring their colleagues in, to bring their teachers in, and to really expand this program. So all the things that you heard today is really the work of these people and the great examples that they're setting for our community. So thank you.
Okay. And Stacy, just in your comment, I've got to let you know, this is my, like the first meeting, and when you were president long ago, you always had everybody show up. I only had five people show up. So that says something, how great you were.
Or that it's 9:00.
A presentation to 2014-15 School Performance Plans per NRS 385, 357.
Susan Kima for the record. And this presentation's not going to be at the same level as the last couple of agenda items with Jump Start and the counselors. They're very dynamic, so. But NRS requires schools to be prepared, or to prepare a plan to improve student achievement. Plans must include an analysis of the data, must identify problems and factors keeping or prohibiting student achievement in the school. They must identify and implement research-based strategies to raise student achievement. In the plans, you must, they must include a piece on parent involvement and remedial opportunities. Plans were submitted to me, and I reviewed them based on the goals of the strategic plan. I also used the state-required rubrics in order to give suggestions and provide feedback to the plans for the sites. Leadership teams looked at the plans and they reviewed them plans and then submitted them to me for their final submission before December 15th for the majority of the plans. It must be noted that last school year, there were board workshops where the principals were able to come before the board and share their plans with the board, as well as our public. Most of the plans that you see this year are what I would say, stay-the-course type of plans, because they were able to net some good results last year. to refinement, just kicking things up a notch. Some of the emphasis that are included on our 90, on our plans for the secondary is in the element, in the middle school, we're looking at refining the curriculum and assessments, increasing the use of Mastery Connect. And I know you have that there, but this is for the viewing public. We're also looking at continuing to enhance the learner-centered teaching practices, really dive in and refine our PLC process. With the middle school, we implemented the laptop project this last school year, and this is the second of, second year, is to continue to find uses for that tool and to roll out Career Cruising, as you just saw here in the previous presentation. For the high school, we're in the development phase of curriculum and assessments. We'll be introducing Mastery Connect throughout this year. They're developing and beginning to use learning guides, and as you saw, the e-portfolio piece, which is tied to the strategic plan, and the Jump Start College presentation is a big part of what the high school's doing, among building community partnerships. This agenda item serves as the formal date that I, as your designee, have notified you that every site has submitted a school improvement plan, a school performance plan, as they call it nowadays. And tonight's date will be on the cover letter, which I'm expect, which is expected to accompany the plans as we send them off to the state. The plans will also be posted on not only the district website, but on each site website. Do you have any questions?
I have one. On the, and I don't know if I'm hammered, we had a handout, and it said that for the elementary schools, one of the goals was 80% of all students will be at reading at grade level by the end of the 14-15 school year. Where did we start?
Where did we start?
Yeah, what percentage are at grade level now to get to 80%?
Okay, so...
I expect you don't have the number right.
Sure, sure. So as I was reviewing what was the focus of the middle school and the high school, I neglected to emphasize what's going on with the elementary school. So going to ask, answer your question, we set a district goal utilizing our Success for All Reading Program data for students to be at 80%. Schools are at various percentages. Some are pretty close to 80%, some are below that. One school is over that, and I expect them to set, they have set goals against themselves to be, you know, probably 85% or higher. So where they started, based on that SFA reading data, is at several different places. Most of them in the 70% range.
Yeah, I guess, just where I was coming from, because I think in some of the plans on the next item, when I was looking, just the reasonability of attaining it was what I was wondering, so, you know, because everything's nice, but if we can't get there, then...
That's right. And I mean, standing up here, I'd like to say 100%, because every leader should be saying 100%, and that's what we're striving for, but we need to get there in increments. We're also looking in the elementary level, as we had really nice data from our first year of full-day kindergarten. So when we're meeting as a leadership, district leadership team, we're looking at that first grade data, because we need to maintain or increase that. We can't, we can't let status quo. This is the, this is the year that we're really watching first grade. The other piece that's really, really important in here is that everybody has a common ground on really looking at that ESL student as the piece. When we're looking at closing the gap, we want to close the gap for all of our students, but we're realizing that there are a lot of strategies that are in that highly qualified, sheltered instruction, instructional practices, or that we direct towards ESL students that are good for special needs students, as well as good for our, just our low-level learner, middle-of-the-road, and high-level learning student. And so we're really focusing, so every time we meet, we're looking at raising the bar for our ELL, our English Language Learner students.
You know what, Ron was mentioning the other day, that, you know, that we have the strategic plan, we have the goals of Race to the Top, and, and we seem to have kind of created a vision. But some of our kind of measurements or goals related to those still seem to be based on adequate yearly progress, or being in certain, having certain groups meet certain targets. And I understand we still need to do those, but I guess I would ask everyone maybe to start thinking about, like, how can we think about our successes that are something other than that? And, you know, I think there's a lot of it in the next item, but then in the back, we still have, we still list all the, we still attach the charts that show, you know, all of that. And I know we can't completely do away with it, but I was just wondering if we could start, you know, to have a conversation and start to think about, how are we measuring success in our district that's something that's not those numbers? And that's just a comment and just something to have people think about. You don't need to answer it, and, but it's been on my mind, and I think some questions that Ron had asked the other day kind of went to that, like, how are we doing? How do we know, you know, how do we know that the plan is, is working? And we see all these presentations, and we think there's really good things going on because of those. So how can we measure those in a way that's not, you know, 80% or 85% of our population are hitting this tag, target? Because I feel like when that's the goal, and that's what we see on a sheet of paper, that's the ceiling instead of the floor. And so like, where are we in between the ceiling and the floor? And that's just kind of a comment generally that I've had. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's a great comment, so maybe we can start thinking about that. Going on to agenda item number 11, discussion of possible action to approve the district performance plan for the 2014-15 school year, and this is an action item, so.
Districts who receive Title I funding are required to submit a district performance Also allowed is, is the ability for districts to submit their strategic plans, which we do as a district. In addition to submitting a strategic plan, I must provide the state with an annual update as to our progress being made with the strategic plan. The plan before you highlights areas of accomplishment and next steps for the five goals of the strategic plan. You may also note in the plan that there is bold references to the strategic plan at the end of each section. There's also references to Race to the Top, which was written to support the strategic plan. And also, the LCM stands for Learner-Centered Model, which is included in the plan. So there's references there. Well, tonight represents a formality in submitting the report. The best informational updates come in the form of our community PLCs, which are held quarterly, where we're inviting our community and our parents to be a part of that. Our other good avenues for the updates are quarterly presentations by Dr. Perdara and the Race of the Top team here at the school board meetings. And while it was unplanned, I noticed tonight's presentation regarding Jump Start College and their e-portfolio piece, as well as the student-based health clinic presentation also, are ways that we continue to update the public and the board about the progress being made in the strategic plan. The other thing is, is really, is that the strategic plan comes most alive in our schools themselves on a daily basis, as we walk through the halls and we watch our professionals work with students. And so if you want me to, I can go through the highlights of each of the goals. Otherwise, I'm open for questions. And once, should you approve the submission, this plan will be updated on a regular basis as we continue to add to it on the website.
I have probably a couple, a couple of questions. One, I don't know if it's best placed in teacher and administrator evaluation system or the system improvement status surveys, where we're looking at teacher morale and attitudes. But like, it comes with like a 360-degree evaluation-type practice, an ability for teachers to, to give an assessment, or, you know, we keep piling everything on to the teachers, that's how I feel like. We don't remove anything off their plates, and I think it would be nice for us as a board to get, to get a true voice from the teachers, whether that comes through in a survey or not. And then also, a lot of organizations nowadays are allowing, like, say on administrator surveys, allowing their subordinates, or they should get input on, now obviously, the workers don't get to run the place, but they should have feedback as to how they, how their supervisor is performing. Because the reality is, is if we're only ever looking down, we can only assess if the person below us is doing what we're telling them to, not if they're truly creating a good work environment. And so I don't, I didn't see anywhere in there, and I haven't seen anywhere in any of the documents I've read so far, that we're truly asking our workforce, what can we do for you? How can we improve it? You know, if we want to improve the assembly line, we ask the person on the assembly line. We don't look at it and say what we think. So I, I would encourage that that would be a place, you know, we bring in community involvement, and, and all of the plans are good, but I think our workforce, workforce deserves a good voice. At least I'd like that as a board member.
Are you making notes of that?
Yes, I am.
No, that's an important, that's just a good point, that we need to, everybody should have that input.
Absolutely.
To know that we're, we're moving successfully, successfully forward for the kids, so.
Absolutely. And it is mentioned in there that we will be putting out surveys during the student-led conference time and the spring parent conference time, but making sure we connect with our teachers. And we did start some surveys last year, but we'll continue to look at those and massage those, so we get their voice and we can bring the results to you.
Sorry, I actually read through the whole thing, so I might get a little annoying here. Are we, the school schedules, is that up for changing again? It said that we put together a committee. Is it something coming down the pipe?
So in the fall, a committee of citizens met at the district office on, for about two, three, two months, three months. And what they did was, is we reviewed the research around school start times. Now, this isn't, just to clarify, this wasn't about what time of the year to start school and how long into the year, like, like a lot of discussions have been around the Washoe schedule. This was a discussion narrowed to, should we start middle school first? Should we start high school later? Should we start elementary at the same time, or later, or earlier? Those kinds of things. And we, we, as a group of parents and citizens that were around the table, explored the research and came up with an analysis that we presented, that Cheryl Macy and Mr. Stokes presented to, presented to the wellness committee. If you want to jump in.
Thank you, Mrs. Kima. And we have looked at our next meeting of February 10th, to actually have Mrs. Macy come and present that information to this body.
Okay.
But it is part of the wellness committees will actually make the recommendation before that. Maybe not before that, but it was brought up at the last wellness committee, and that's part of the whole wellness policy that they're putting together, my understanding.
Another comment, sorry. The, I really like the, the idea of the parent space on campus, especially, you know, with the one-to-one devices rollout and acknowledging that not every family even has access to the internet. So we're moving all this stuff online. If there's no device even at home for the parents to get on and utilize this stuff, I think, I hope we can get to that point. That's a really good idea. And then also, unfortunately, because of school security issues nowadays, we've created fortresses, and it would be nice to have a welcoming space for parents to feel, that gives their own in the school.
Okay. Just with that parent space, that was what I was thinking. I was, I was picturing the schools and how I go there. I'm there quite frequently for PTA. Do we have the parent, I mean, I know we've opened up the libraries when we did the online registration, and we had some stuff like that, but do we have that yet at each school site, or is that still in development?
It's still in development. I know that a while back, there used to be a huge parent resource at Student Support Services for parents with special needs. And they were, they were taking those materials and putting them out at the sites in the library for parents to have access to. I think there needs to be increased communication there. I think what's happened is, now that we were afforded the opportunity to have full-day kindergarten, we prioritize that as far as making sure we had room for all the little ones that wanted to take it, families that wanted to take advantage of that, and that did eat up some space. I know that in some places, schools have just a spot for PTA and all the PTA things, and I think that varies from school to school on what that space looks like. Is it just for PTA and PTA space things, or is that a bigger, bigger center? But I think in there, what we're looking at, like at the high school, in the counseling area, having a resource for, area for parents to come in to be able to look at college and career opportunities and resources with their children. There's a, there's a real appetite for that.
No, I have one more question. On the back page of this with the combined budget thing, what project year are we in right now?
We're in project year two.
Three.
Yeah, three.
That's what I thought. So that, we have it till one more year, and then we have to figure out where this $3 million is to keep continuing these programs?
Yes. And there has been discussions among the district office staff and on a transition plan.
Okay.
Probably AJ's got it already figured out.
He's our favorite. We said he's our favorite uncle these days.
Okay, we, ready for motion?
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve the district's performance plan as submitted for the 2014-2015 year.
Second.
Public comment?
I emptied out the room.
Seeing none.
That's one way to get rid of public.
Hi.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I can second it. Do you need the, each individual item listed in the motion?
Yeah, because they aren't all a part of it.
Yeah, you, let's go, we would make these specific on the...
Amended.
Yeah, go ahead.
I amend the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items A, B, D, H, I, J, K, and L as submitted.
Second.
Any public comment? Seeing none, on the paper?
Aye.
Close. Agenda item number 13, request for future agenda topics. Anything at this time? Don't hold back.
When is the next PLC meeting?
February 19th.
February 18th. It's a busy week, but at 6:00 PM at Carson High School Library.
PLC, February 19th. And February, February 19th is still the joint meeting?
Yes. If there are new future agenda items and no further business, I just deem this meeting adjourned, and we're out of here.
Thank you.
PLC, February 19th. And February, February 19th is still the joint meeting?
Yes.
If there are new future agenda items and no further business, I just deem this meeting adjourned, and we're out of here.
Thank you.